Okay, so we can get started. Kelsey, are you going to be recording? Okay, we have the meeting recorded. Oh, sure, can anyone?
Darrellin, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh, but we can't hear you if somebody said something.
I'm sorry.
Darrellin, did you speak?
Yes, just a minute. Oh dear.
We can hear you.
And I can hear her, maybe you can't though.
No, we can hear both of you now, but not very loud.
Yeah, we couldn't in the beginning, but now we can.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, we heard Roseanne and Darrellin.
Perfect.
And so just for those of you who are attending by video, we have Duncan McDonald, Kelsey Peterson, Ted, who you can see, Paul Connor at the back of the room. This is Jessica Luizos talking. We have Michael Midtag, Paul Engels, and Monica Osby. So we are missing. Okay, we are missing. Yeah, I wanted to say Bernie, but it's not. Yes, we are missing Bernie emotionally, but our member. We are going to be welcoming Andrew Chalnick to the commission. He was not able to attend tonight, but he is an official planning commissioner as of. Well, I guess tonight would be the first official meeting, so we're excited about him joining us. Hopefully, starting at the next meeting.
Will he be coming to the next meeting?
I believe so, the email I saw said that there, you know, he had other plans for this evening. You know, he didn't know we were going to be having a meeting when he had made those plans, but the next one he would join us for. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, we will proceed with the agenda. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Do you have anything not related to the agenda either? Very good. Great, and then if anyone is attending online and had something unrelated to the agenda, you could unmute or turn your video on. Do I want them to? No. We don't normally do that.
They were just present.
We never say who's in the audience. It feels a little awkward.
In other committees.
Oh. Not that we don't like some, but. So are there, okay, so my announcement, I do have an announcement. On the fourth, I attended the city council meeting. The city council has warned, I mean, this was actually outlined in our agenda here, that the city council has warned the LDR amendments that we sent them for public comment. And I just wanted to relay that they, multiple of the council counselors said that they appreciated the speed we addressed the PUD concern with and, you know, really appreciated that we had kind of worked on that that piece that they'd identified that felt missing. So I just wanted to pass that on. Any other announcements?
I have a little one, which is that we are in the process right now of moving over to Office 365 in the city, which is internally very interesting, externally not especially interesting, but it will update all of your email addresses. You will continue to be able to receive email at yourname@esprill.com, but starting next week, everybody in the city's outgoing email and over time incoming is going to become yourname@southberlingtonvt.gov. And our IT folks have offered to come in 20 or 30 minutes before your next meeting to make sure that anybody who's got any tech issues, making sure that everybody is able to use the the southberlingtonvt.gov, because that is our policy to make sure it's all set up on whatever devices you want. And if you, if there's follow up for a home computer or something like that, they're happy to help you with it, so stay tuned.
The only other announcement I had was pretty much written out in the memo and the agenda. Just the intention is staff will be planning about three months in advance, but will be more or less on the agenda for the upcoming five or six meetings, so that everybody has a better sense of what's kind of coming up and what the timeline is for different projects and when different topics that may have been tabled will be coming back, just both as an allocation of staff time planning tool, but also as an allocation of planning commission time and expectations. So that's something we're working on with the intention of that being sort of a rolling three month process moving forward.
Have any commissioners' reports from committees?
There was a public comment meeting last Thursday of the Airport Res zoning Task Force. And we had already decided to deny, to recommend that the planning commission deny the the request from the airport, the city of Burlington to rezone 11 acres of property near Kirby Street. So the public comments were overwhelmingly in favor of denying the request. I think 30 people spoke. Three of them wanted us to approve the request and 27 wanted us not to. So we'll be meeting again on April 28th for a final vote that will then send our recommendation to deny to the planning commission. So you should have it for the second Tuesday of May.
Spoiler alert.
Yeah.
Great.
I know there's not a, I don't think there's a specific project. They just wanted the zoning at first, right? I mean, they didn't make a proposal that there's a actual project.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there is. Okay, misunderstood. Then the question would be, are there other available parcels around the airport you think is alternative?
Yeah. Quite a few, particularly over where the area is where general services is now and where the educational part of the airport is now.
Thanks.
950 acres, right?
950 acres of the airport, yeah. The there's a group, Burlington based group that is no airport expansion, and I don't know exactly what their name is, but essentially no airport expansion. And they canvassed the entire Chamberlain neighborhood and have 255 signatures of people who are opposed to any airport expansion.
Any other committees updates? Okay, we can move on to item five, which is considering updates to the planning commission report on the draft amendments to the LDRs that we had prepared for the city council. So there's, you know, kind of an outline of the technical part of this, but essentially the city council warned a public hearing along with a small or some changes to what we forwarded them. So our purview is to review that change in light of the comprehensive plan and update our report. And we did have a redlined version in here of that.
My, it was not on, no. Okay, yes, so. So the city council warned a public hearing for the land development regulations that we forwarded to them. That hearing will be on May 2nd. They made some changes to the language we had sent them. So it's our job to review their changes in light of the comprehensive plan and update the report that we sent to them. So in our packet, there was a redlined version of that updated report that we can discuss and or vote on to return to the city council.
Everybody's read it.
Yeah, so are there any questions on what was in there? Okay, there's a draft motion written here in our packet.
I'll move it.
I wasn't, I was just gonna make a comment, though. I fully, I know we're, we'll be warning this, but I fully support this change. And quite frankly, I wish it wasn't just pertaining to airport connected parking situations. I feel strongly that we're doing a disservice to a lot of really good, creative and good intentioned, good purpose projects by having a, you know, don't put a parking lot in front of your building kind of zoning requirement. So I'm going to say it again, and I know that we can't expand it here, but gosh darn it, I wish we could, because it's very frustrating to me. But I do support this change.
I had noted that it's something that we should come back to as well, because I have the same feelings as Monica about it. It's a bit over. It's a bit overregulated. But I think now is not the time.
I would also support what you both said. If we could, at some point, dive back into this and see if there might be a better way we could come to a solution to avoid a situation like we have now with data.
And I would like to see that happen sooner versus later, because it was a surprise finding out about the beta situation. It's, you know, this church and state, and I absolutely respect that. I didn't know about this problem that was happening with their plan until I saw it on a, you know, social media post and then. So I know it's, it's, we're not supposed to be involved with what the DRB is doing, and that's appropriate. But I think that this, to me, is saying there's some urgency that we move this up the priority list and really talk about it. I think our focus has been rightfully so on IZ for so long, because that's what we had to do. And now there's a chance, I think, for us to really strategically look at some of these issues, because we have to make things more streamlined, make some things happen here.
I agree as well that we want to revisit this. I think I cited some time ago, the Green Mountain Coffee Roasters. They have almost like a mini park in front of the road and then they're parking and then the building. It can be done attractively and creatively, as you noted, Monica. The one concern I have that we have to address is form-based code. You know, that, that, you know, is something that we have as one of our mantras or doctrines. And we have to sort of balance that, because suddenly if we're being scored, obviously it means right up to the road and the parking in back. So we got some, got some work to do and, but I, I definitely think we need some flexibility there.
So I know we're going to be talking about our upcoming work plan priorities coming up soon here, so it sounds like this is something to add to the list for consideration. So I think Michael had made a motion to approve the report changes.
Started, I didn't read.
Okay.
I do move to approve the updated planning commission report on LDR-22-01, -02, -03, and -04, and submit the updated report to the city council.
Second.
Hey, Duncan, seconded. Any additional kind of discussion or questions? Anything from the public, either in the audience or online? If you are joining us electronically, you could turn on your video or or just unmute. We are not, we're not using the chat function. So if you want to provide input, you'd have to unmute.
This is Roseanne, I'd like to make just a brief comment on what you just did related to the climate crisis. I would hope that you could act with all due speed in addressing actions a city should take to address the climate crisis. So it looks like you can act very quickly on something like this that, you know, it has an economic benefit to a business. And I would encourage you to do the same for issues regarding the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. And we had something from the audience, did you want to state your name and? Do you want to address that, Paul?
Sure, so the amendment that the city council has made would say that for future applications, if a building at the airport is either inside the security area or it makes up a part of the security area, then parking would not need to meet our standard. Otherwise, it says that parking has to be the side or rear. So it could be in front of a building like that. And that would apply, like I said, to any building that is either inside the secure area or if the building itself makes up the secure area, like, for example, the terminal, a member of the public can walk in one side, but you can't just walk out the other side. It's part of the security area.
I have a follow up question and a statement. To be clear, this doesn't impact the beta project, which is in front of the DRB right now, because that's already in its place.
That's correct, so under Vermont law, an applicant, an application is reviewed under the set of rules at the time that they applied. And so that sort of cuts both ways. So if the city has adopted a more stringent regulation, then they are allowed to be under the old rule. If the city changes the rule in some other way, they are still under the old rule. They could, somebody could choose to withdraw and resubmit, but then they'd be starting at the beginning point.
And just so I understand, there's no mechanism that the planning commission can activate to streamline that process for any projects that are impacted? Not one in particular, any projects that are impacted by this particular change so that the process can be?
For future applications, they would be subject to new rules for anything that is in process that is completely out of the hands of the legislative bodies of the city, the planning commission and the council, and it is entirely in the hands of the Development Review Board under the rules that they applied under. An applicant, like I said, always has the right to withdraw and submit under a new set of rules, but then they are under the full set of rules, whatever they may be.
And they're in the line as they fall. If they were.
Yes, all the public hearing notices, et cetera, et cetera, so, yep. Sure. The beta technologies, as I understand it, will be a tenant of the airport. So they didn't purchase any land, but they may have an agreement, a lease agreement with the airport. But they applied. I think your question is, when they applied for their application, did they know what the rules were? And they applied under the rules that were in effect at that time? So that's what they're working through with the DRB, and that's the Development Review Board and the applicant's side of things.
Okay, any, anything else before we call vote? Okay, on favor? Any opposed? Okay, so unanimous, that was five, that was six of us, six, six.
Yes, I have one additional comment that I just need to connect it to this, and it has to do with the comp plan. But this change is not just for one particular parcel. This would be for anyone around the airport ever wanting to do this. And again, so I just want to reemphasize what the Chamberlain Neighborhood Task Force is going to be coming to you with, which is the profound importance that the neighborhood plays on the west side of the airport. And that with this change going in with parking being allowed, you know, not in the back, I think it makes it even more paramount for us to recognize how important and cherished the Chamberlain neighborhood is at this time. Okay, so I think this is a fabulous change for areas where it's appropriate for such business to happen around the airport. But it's all the more reason for us to be very strong in hopefully our support of the residential status of that neighborhood, because it's very important to the city.
So next item is the, so we did seven. Oh wait, no, this is different, sorry, we're on, we're on six. So the public hearing for the proposed amendments, the official map, we have this called OM22-01, essentially to add bike and pedestrian connections between the 189 Bike Pedestrian Bridge that's planned to the Dorset Street, Williston Road, and Quarry Hill Road connection, so. One, oh yes, I89, you're right. I said one instead of I. It's not a Roman numeral. So, yes, it looks like Paul's bringing up the map here.
So I received one additional public comment, the one that you got. The version of this that is in your packet is a PDF map. And in that, there's a label in the blow up showing what's, what's around it. And there's a notation on the land on the north side of Williston Road that calls that area the the UVM Centennial Woods Natural Area. UVM let us know that we, hopefully this is the right document. There it is. In the, in the blow up box there where it says UVM Centennial Woods Natural Area, that's just a label that got added this time. That's not an accurate representation of what that is. So I would recommend that we just remove that label. It's not a, it's not a meaningful label. It's a simpler change than redrawing it to exactly where that actually is.
Do we also then remove the East Woods label, just to not?
I think that would be correct, yes. We should remove both of those labels. That's not on the existing official map. It was just a label that the RPC added on that I didn't catch that was added.
So the same thing with the Wheeler Park Farm?
Yes, so I'm not sure why they all have. So the UVM Wheeler Park Barn, the UVM Hort Farm, the UVM East Woods Natural Area, and the UVM Central Centennial Woods Natural Area, those labels aren't on the current official map. And so I think it'd be simpler to just remove them. They're not telling, they're not doing anything policy wise.
If you scroll down, I think the golf courses, oh no, yeah, the country clubs labeled.
Right, that one, I believe, is on the current official map as a label thing, so.
So you were just saying, you know, to keep, you know, just, it would be the same as this, just with the two labels.
Yep, so no, no proposed policy change from them, just that request, because it's not entirely accurate.
Any questions about this change? Up here before, okay, does anyone from the public have any questions or comments about the official map change? The labels? Oh, they're not, it's just the label. It's private land owned by the university that is, kind of has the wrong boundary. It has nothing to do with what the map is supposed to be showing. A Wheeler Park would stay on the map.
Wheeler Park, Wheeler Park Barn, UVM Wheeler Park Barn.
Corner of Swift and Spear, yes.
So, so the actual, just for those who are following the audience here, the actual policy change being proposed by the planning commission tonight is what's up on the screen right now, which is to make some changes to the planned rec path in the city around I89 exit 14. So the green dashes would be new areas to connect the bike ped bridge that we got the big federal grant for last year. And the very small red dashes are the places that we would take it off. So it's, it was shown in the wrong place, so it's just moving a little bit over. Yep, it's on the city's website, yep.
Okay, any other public comment?
I just wanted to actually say, I think this was clarifying hearing a member of the public use the word park in association with this land, because I think there is sometimes confusion in the public that, you know, the Wheeler Park property, East Woods, all of those are parks, and they're not. They're UVM private land that they kind of allow people to use, kind of. So it's an important differential, and I'm glad that that conversation just happened.
Are they marked as parks? I don't think so, they're just marked as East Woods or.
There was confusion just among, yes, which I think can happen, so.
Okay, I think she also thought I said Wheeler Park, which is a city park, I think, and I may have actually said that.
And now you just said it inverse again, yeah.
Okay.
Wheeler Park is the UVM barn, Wheeler is our park.
Little community garden there as well.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try to not talk.
Is anyone else having internet problems but me? Just me, right?
Just you.
I'm telling you, I'm not connected, I always have trouble here. Anything else as part of the public comment on the official map change? Okay.
It's behind the mall, actually.
Right, so just, it's, it's, it's this little green line right here. It's basically the planned location is where the interstate gets narrow, so south of where the on-ramps and the off-ramps are, because it gets a lot, it's a lot shorter distance there than going all the way up to the, to the bridge. So it'd be right behind sort of where the, the old, the entrance, the back entrance to the mall by the Lens Crafters and Sears would be, yeah. It would go directly across and over to Quarry Hill Road. And then from there, you could get in, you could get to UVM.
Do you want to point out Staples?
Just as a quick clarification, Paul, the presentation on the screen has not projected very well, okay.
Oh, okay.
Now it is.
Yeah.
Previously, it was just a big white background.
Yeah, that was intentional.
It wasn't even showing 89, so it's hard to tell what was going on.
So this is the U-Mall here, this is the, this is the parking garage and the Sears. It would cross right here, sorry for the green on green. And then it would connect into Quarry Hill Road right here over on the left-hand side of the screen. And then also up to the Staples Plaza up here and over to the CVS over here. Some of this is still a little bit conceptual. The purpose of the official map is so that private property owners know that there is a plan to put it in there at some location. But as you, as, as folks know, we got a grant this year to look in more detail of exactly where it would go. This is more just making sure that there is clear public notice to all the affected property owners that the intent is that there will be a bike path connection through their property. Right.
You mean Williston Road?
It would connect back up to Williston Road, but it would not go pedestrian or cyclist would not have to be using, crossing the on-ramps and the off-ramps, which is what they have to do today. So you'd be able to avoid that, so that's a. We just got the grant this past year. I hesitate to place a guess, because anything that involves federal money is a very big project. So it's, there's, there's many, many steps to be done, but it is a big priority for the city. So the coming few years is our hope.
This actually is our public hearing right now.
Yes.
Yeah, did we open that, we, we, so these are comments from, just to be clear, this is our public hearing.
No, I don't think you did.
Goodness, I just said we were doing the public hearing, didn't actually officially.
I moved to open the public hearing.
A second.
Okay, on favor of opening the public hearing? There's any additional questions or comments? We will, anything that we just talked about is in our head as part. as part of this discussion and input. If there's any other additional information.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. On favor of closing the public hearing? Was everyone? Okay. Any additional comment from the planning commission?
It's very exciting.
Then I think we, well, we have to actually
Make a motion.
Yeah.
And my understanding is there'll be more shirets or meetings to sort of figure out exactly.
Yep. That's exactly what you applied for the grant from the regional planning commission to do this year. Uh, so this is really sort of a placeholder to make sure that everybody is well on notice that this is, if there ever was a redevelopment of the, of the mall or any of these properties that they have to accommodate it, but we'll be doing a more robust planning to, to look at exactly where it should go. Cause this is just following the edge of a property line.
Could go right, directly right into replay sports, just straight in.
Well, and Paul, I just hope that the bike ped committee can also be part of, you know, the work that, um, that Grant is gonna.
I'm certain they will be.
Is, uh, are you, um, is the city gonna reach out to new owners of the mall?
We already have.
You have, okay, great.
Yep. They're aware and excited. So, yep.
Okay. So we can move on to seven, which is review of feedback, possible changes to draft and possible action to approve and submit the draft amendments. And the report to the city council.
So I moved.
I think you need.
I'll read it.
Yeah, thank you.
I move to approve the draft amendment number OM dash twenty-two dash oh one to the official map. And to submit the amendment and the accompanying planning report to the city council. Planning commissioner report to the city council.
I think Monica won the second. This time. Any questions or comments as part of the motion? From anyone up here or in the audience? Okay. On favor? That was unanimous. Wonderful. We are moving on. Number eight already. Initial review of zoning change requests. We have, um, we do have an official policy on reviewing these. So in general, our initial review is to try to do these twice a year. We've been, we had put zoning change requests on hold for a pretty long time here while we were working on IZ. So this is trying to get back to our schedule. And the idea is that we're hearing an initial request and making an initial decision on how to proceed. So that could be to take it up now, to, um, schedule it into a future work plan, or just say it's something that's not really fitting into our, our work plan and schedule. And, um, we're not gonna move it forward. So. Duncan, did you have a question?
Well, I was gonna, um, I, I don't wanna put somebody in the spot up at Roland. Um, I, I know you're here. Would it be too much to ask you to give us a description of what exactly you guys are looking for?
He's prepared to do that. And I have, um, a couple of slides that he submitted to me that I can.
And are, are you for on logic? The first, okay, perfect. Yeah. If you wanna introduce yourself and come on up?
Yep. Um, any of these mics should work. Um, you just have to press the button to, um, so for the little green light to turn on.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. If I take this off while I talk, can we keep these on?
Hi, I'm Jess Damon. I'm a director at OnLogic. And I have Roland Gronafield, one of our owners here, uh, to sort of give some context and show some pictures for the requests that we're making tonight. Kelsey, you have those?
Yeah, as soon as I can.
Okay, I'll give you a sec.
Get everything open, ready.
Uh, maybe some quick thirty-second background on OnLogic in case you're not familiar. We, um, design and manufacture industrial and rugged computers. We are headquartered here in South Burlington and we also have five, five sites across, uh, the globe at this point. We've got a site in Vermont, North Carolina, the Netherlands, Taiwan and Malaysia. We're about two hundred thirty employees globally, a hundred fifty of which are here in Vermont. Most of our manufacturing happens in our facility here in Vermont. So we, at this point, have currently outgrown our facility here in South Burlington. And we are in the process of building a brand new facility. A rendering is on the screen. We haven't actually built this yet, but this is what it's going to look like. You'll recognize the whales' tails. This is right off of I eighty-nine in Technology Park.
Just, just as a quick point of background, um, this is a request for a change to the LDRs. It's we, the planning commission does not have the power to change the LDRs for a specific property. This is a request that then oh, can open the dialogue about the planning commissions, planning goals and how the request would fit into any changes that would affect a, a greater zoning district, a, a bigger area, different types, an, an overlay district, something like that. So it's not something that we can re, that, that you can grant specific to one project and one property. It's opening a dialogue about the greater, um, planning implications of the request.
That's not the hotel. That's your new building, right?
Correct.
Where will, where will this, uh?
Jumping the gun, Michael.
Yeah, well, cause I have a question about it anyway.
Yeah, sure. So, so yeah, the, so basically the reason we're here tonight is we are building this new building on this plot of land in Technology Park. And as part of our vision for an OnLogic campus, we would like to build a training slash conference center on our campus with, that will include OnLogic visitor housing. So it's our understanding right now, we are in a mixed industrial and commercial zone. Adding in this housing element is not currently a permitted use in our zone, which is why we're here tonight. So, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, please.
Something I just mentioned in the, the memo, it's likely that this type of use would be considered hotel or hotel extended stay under our current LDRs. It's possible another use could be implicated by some of the training functions of the facility. But that has yet to be determined. Um, and, and yes, you're correct. As of, as of now, mixed use, mixed industrial commercial does not allow hotel or hotel extended stay.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. And so we're, we're, we've used this word hotel. Just to be clear, our intended use is that this would be for OnLogic visitors, for new employees onboarding, from, coming from other sites, coming for training and professional development, for big, large quarterly team meetings. Also for our customers and our suppliers to come to our location and interact with our production line and get FaceTime with our engineering team, that kind of stuff. So mostly are completely related to OnLogic and our business practices and not necessarily renting out to the public, rooms to the public or anything like that. Sorry, Michael, go ahead.
So I wouldn't be able to book a, book a room in this facility.
That's. Is the intended, is our intention at this time. Yeah. So this adds a little bit of context. This is sort of our, our vision for our master plan on this particular lot that we've purchased in Technology Park. So just for some context, I eighty-nine sort of runs parallel to the bottom of this picture. And then Community Drive is along the top. To the right, you can see a little bit of the FedEx parking lot. And then right in the middle is us. We've got the rec path that sort of goes around the perimeter. So the dark shaded orange blocks, that is what we're building currently for our new facility. And then the lighter orangish, uh, marks where we could possibly grow in the future. And the training center that we're talking about tonight is the orangish block in the upper left corner. One, I guess, oh yeah, there's another great picture. One other, one other point maybe to make about this sort of campus that I've referenced is the idea is that people stay in this one area. Pretty much everything you need is there. We have a full-service cafe in this building. We have housing, we have training, you know, reducing trip ends and traffic throughout the business park and into the rest of the city. Roland, I don't know if you wanna add anything, anything I missed?
Yeah, a couple of quick things to add. The, uh, for us, you know, this is kind of an important part of, of our business, but we also have heard for other businesses in, uh, around the technology park that they're interested in someone like this as well. So kind of on the broader level, for you to consider, uh, a zoning change, there, there are other businesses that have a, a need. And especially right now, um, it's been really hard to find housing and hotel space for, um, for, uh, for employees, even for temporary or even longer term stays. This would also allow for a, a family or an employee to land when they move here for our business uh, for a period of time while they find housing, because that's been a, a real challenge. That's. Anything else?
Any questions?
Yeah, this, this is, this is strictly a business use facility, training and accommodation for your customers, for employees from other facilities who have to stay overnight. If they come from North Carolina or wherever. Or new employees, as you just mentioned. So the question I have for my colleagues is, if it's a business use, why would we need a zoning change? I mean, it's industrial, commercial. It's a business use. If it was a hotel where they were renting it out, to me, uh, that would be a different question. I mean, I've, I've, I've actually been in facilities like this in, in Scandinavia where the people I was visiting had a couple of studio apartments above their offices. And, you know, I arrived there with jet lag. They said, well, you know, go up there and spend the day in bed if you want. But it was strictly, absolutely strictly for their visitors, customers and employees who had to stay overnight because they lived far away. And, and this sounds very similar to that.
That, that was our initial, uh, request, um, uh, to, uh, I think at the time we talked to Marla. And as we understood it, that is not allowed in the current zoning regulations or the current maybe even fire code or whatever it is. I'm not entirely sure what, what the reasons are, but.
Yeah, well, if it was a hotel, that would be true, right? But I'm not sure that it is.
That's probably something for us to talk about. Maybe there's a, a different definition that we could possibly even to create to be more specific to this type of scenario to apply in different districts, different commercial district. I mean, so, yeah. But I, I think the idea is that for tonight, we wanna ask questions and then, you know, see what we think the next steps might be. If it's something, I know we're gonna be talking about our work plan. Or if, you know, so I think kind of fleshing out if this is something we're interested in pursuing. Ted and then Monica?
For some time I have, years ago, Paul, remember, and Jessica probably too, is I've been a supporter of, uh, business parks. You know, I think I've, I've been as Michael had to different places, locations where it really is a campus. So I think this is terrific. Obviously we have to work through the whole zoning. Michael brings a good point up. It sounds like it's a legal question. It might be able to go through, you know, uh, if it's not, uh, for the public. But I think, uh, we're sort of on the cusp of, uh, really visiting the whole idea of maybe creative business parks. I know, uh, several of the counselors are very supportive of it. Megan Emery has, uh, several times mentioned uh, her desire to have housing in some of these industrial areas. So I think, you know, I sense that there's support.
We, at one point, we talked about a campus. I'm sorry, did I? We talked about a, a campus PUD of some sort. I, I'm not sure if that would pertain to something like this, or there would be elements of that.
Well, you did ultimately decide to, uh, you, you have a master plan provision in place that allows for the, the thinking forward. So if, um, the, if the, the drawing that, uh, that, uh, Jess and Roland showed a minute ago, the master plan would allow them under the regulations that are now in effect to pre-plan those lighter toned areas and know with certainty that the regulations that they applied under would be in effect for ten years for them. So that's, that's what the master plan can do. You decided, uh, with this current round that's in front of the council to not sort of go down and, and hyper-design the various additional kinds of PUDs and instead to go with a general PUD, which would allow for something like this. Uses are not typically in and of themselves, a, a element of a, of a master planning or a campus planning. That's, that would be in your table of uses and how you define things. So the definition of what these folks fall under of, um, manufacturing or light manufacturing doesn't make any reference to ancillary support services or, uh, accommodations for employees. It strictly speaks about the office work and the physical construction of things, which is why the guidance that's been given back to them is that, um, at this time, under our rules, that's those ancillary services would not be eligible today.
And just as a point of clarification, when I just opened this, 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 this discussion and said you could change uses in districts, that's not the only thing you can do. Altering, as, as Jessica said, altering definitions, expanding definitions, um, creating a different definition, you know, all of those things are on the table as zoning, the changes to the LDRs in the same way that changing a, and allowed use in a zone would be. But, uh, and as Jessica said, this is this decision or the meeting tonight is the initial review of the request to decide if this is something that deserves further, further thought and further work, both by the planning commission and by staff to be dealt with in the next work plan that we'll be setting in the next few meetings.
Right. So if you decide that this is something worthy of your follow-up, then you would decide in, in your work plan, as, as Kelsey just said, to, to pick it up. And then you could explore what's the right way to do it if you wanted to. You know, it might be a definition change. It might be a new definition. It makes me think of something like, we have a definition and a use category, category called shopping center. Obviously that has nothing to do with shopping center, but a shopping center is a, um, collection of a bunch of uses that are just considered one thing in and of itself. So it could be like a business over a certain size is eligible to be a three sixty campus. I don't know what it gets called. And then it's its own thing that involves by definition, multiple things within it. That's another way to, to, to look at this. That's what we would do as a next stage if you wanted to take this up.
So I have, um, two comments. We added showers for people who ride their bikes to work. I think to Michael's point, I don't see a difference. If there is a person who is not having to pay for a room, pay for a shower, exchange, if there's no monetary exchange. I mean, people have couches in their office. I've slept in an office before. I don't see a difference. So I like very much the idea for the short term of reviewing the legal definition and seeing if in fact this is not actually already an accepted use.
I would say we have reviewed it. It is not currently an accepted use. That's been reviewed through the DRB through staff. So I can affirm to you that it is presently not allowed in our regulations.
So I'm interested in further discussing that piece. Separate from that, I know I sent to the commission and this can go in the minutes so that it's a public document, but I sent everyone a, a few times through our, our IZ process, um, about the Google campus concept. And that does get involved, that does involve, uh, monetary exchange. It's a campus compass, uh, concept where housing, local shops, everything would be built within. This is what Google's trying to do in, um, California. It's residential and business. It's so that they can ensure their employees have housing. And it would be a place where they would actually, you know, live. So I would very much like to, um, discuss that. Whether it's as part of the campus PUD, which I don't see why we can't, uh, you know, bring that back to the fore. But I think that, and, uh, so I guess my, my comment is if there is a way to look at that definition again and have it very tightly constricted in terms of like no monetary exchange, no independence. But it would be a shame if we did find a way to make that work in the short term. And for then other people, just to jump on that, because in fact, I think there can be something very beneficial to our area if we can further finally explore this greater campus concept where there is housing and local shops and long-term. I think that could benefit, you know, example, in this particular case, I've, I heard mention of a conference center and I'm kind of thinking, gee, would that by chance seat six hundred people for a? Center and I'm kind of thinking, gee, would that by chance seat six hundred people for a music show? Someday, I mean, if we couldn't do it if it's an on logic only, but if it were all of a sudden a campus. And there were monetary exchanges, why couldn't a nonprofit drama group on? You know, be able to ask on logic if they could use the the uh conference center for a public use. So I'm just saying, that would be more of a long-term conversation and interested in both.
I would agree. I'm sorry, Paul, go ahead.
Makes me wonder what Apple went through with Cupertino, California. Uh like Monica mentioned, Google. Um and I'll put a pitch in for for form-based code. If we had adopted citywide port-based code ten years ago, this wouldn't be a problem. It would be a question of form and that function.
The the idea of separating use from what the building looks like. So that's kind of what Paul's referring to.
I was just gonna say, I think Monica has a really good point. Um I think we're we're gonna have to get really creative. With looking at housing, um just given how it's such a such a tough thing. For so many businesses, not just here but everywhere. And I think that's why you're seeing things like what Google's doing is it's just it's. I mean, as as a business owner, Roland, you know this, it it's really tough when you can't staff your business because people have no place to live. Um it's 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 a real detriment, um you know, and and again, I think this is a longer term conversation than what these guys are proposing right now, but. Something we should should have on our radar. Um what one quick question, what's your timeframe for the building that is going to be built?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um so we're gonna be building this current building, uh we're hoping to start in in May. Uh we're still waiting for some permits from the state that uh are a little backed up apparently. Um so uh but hopefully we can start in May and then finish it up by uh probably in the fall of next year. Um so subsequently, it'd be pretty ideal if we can immediately after that start. On on this hotel space or whatever we would call it. Um uh if that's if that's in the cards and and I understand that changing zoning is uh is an effort. Um but at the same time, uh we have a real need uh just as mentioned for employee housing in general and. This in in my mind fills a a good void there, at least a temporary situation for people.
Um so I have a question. I know um a few commissioners kind of brought up housing. Your, just to be clear, your request isn't for employee housing. It's it's more of a.
It would be kind of extended stay effectively temporary housing because we we have so many people that are trying to move. Here right now and we have actually had quite a few people turned down offers because they cannot find housing. Um so the hope is to make this kind of a combination of a short-term stay, but even an extended stay, people can stay for. You know, three months or maybe even six months until they have a place to to actually uh buy or rent. Um I I know that's not gonna necessarily solve all of these problems, but it is a real problem in in general in in the. In this, in this, yeah, in this greater Burlington area, really.
Would they have to pay for that?
Um that's a that's a kind of an interesting question, but so um uh we haven't really considered how the economics of it would work. I mean, for for normal um situations uh where people would be here for training, obviously not. Uh there's probably some I R S uh regulations, I'm assuming here um in play for if we provide housing to employees for a longer period of time.
It would be a taxable benefit for them.
Right, exactly. So so there probably needs to be some, it may not be payment, but it may be a taxable benefit that we need to put on W two or something like that. Yeah, but we will figure that out. We have all the people for that.
Well, so I guess the question for us is if we're interested in pursuing this and.
Yeah, I had a um couple of things. I I really thank you for being here because Forbes lists the top states for business. And Vermont is not right up there. I noticed that North Carolina is number one. But even with that, you do have a local, a small location, hopefully there.
We we, yeah, we we open an office for that reason because there's just a lot more more uh employment and possibilities there.
So as a longtime South Burlington resident, I most appreciate that you've decided to put down stake here and. The uh other paper, I was very sorry to, you know, see that unwelcome South Burlington, but more specifically. I was absolutely astounded at the one point three million dollars for permitting and really comment is, I certainly hope. That you let whomever know Paul or who matter, um what we're doing, you know, what is being done incorrectly. Um so we don't duplicate problems for other businesses like yourself.
Yeah, and and this this article was really referring to Act two fifty because Act two fifty is completely duplicative over uh local zoning regulations. And and that's the the issue there. You you know, so that's, I'd say the. The city team has been great to work with and 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 no concerns whatsoever there. Thank you.
So in terms of um, you know, priority, I would say absolutely yes, and I'd really like to see it be combined. With what we were just discussing earlier, with just us not being aware of some of the struggles that. Um Beta was having. Again, not to be company specific, but I really feel an urge to learn. You know, here, what are the problems? What are the stumbling blocks? What are the hurdles? Um that um that we can spend some good quality time focusing on. And I kind of see this all. In similar ways, not just for one area, you know, are there things overall that we can be doing? We know now we're we're we're. Confident in the amount of um our environmental protections that we've put in place and we feel really good and solid about those. So I feel like it's time for us to look at now, now that we know it land, we're protecting, what can we do? Um for the best of the purpose and the quality of life. And and I I have things to learn there. So I would like to really make that a priority and find a way to combine these conversations. And come up with some creative, you know, maybe it is a form-based code type um solution that can really simplify and work with. The needs are.
Anything else? It looks like we have a public comment. Um Roseanne, do you wanna go ahead?
Uh yes, thank you. Um I think one of the things you haven't discussed that you ought to consider uh before, um you know. Maybe putting this on your docket is what are the implications for revenue from the places that will not be um used? So if people are staying at uh this hotel-like place and eating there, they will not be staying in local hotels. Or eating um necessarily in local establishments. So South Burlington will lose that meals and rooms taxes that we get from that. Um I have no idea whether or not local establishments would suffer as a result of not getting the business that will then be. Um uh you know, eliminated because people will be staying there, not in our local hotels and eating there. Not necessarily in our local food establishments. Uh so that could be tossed, a lost revenue for the city if. Uh this kind of a insular campus is um goes forward. So something for you to think about.
Great, thanks, Roseanne. Any other comments or questions? Okay, um how, Paul?
I've just followed up on what Monica said um about form-based code. One of the advantages of form-based code. Is that it's good for the businesses that um come to town because they don't have to go through all this permitting and. And spend one point three million dollars or whatever it is um to get the permits they need uh with form-based code. Once the rules are set, then you play by the rules and you build your buildings. That's it.
They still have to go through Act two fifty. So and it sounds like that's where the majority of those hits were, but yes, very streamlined.
I'm just saying, that's the upside for business with form-based code.
If you, you uh Jessica were asking about. Where, when and how we should, I I I think we should move on this as expeditiously as we can. Um Ted's pointed out that people think this is a tough place for businesses to establish themselves. We should make it. Easy if we can. And if we can find a definition of. What on logic wants to do, which is not um not a hotel. Another another residence, that's a business use, then I think we should look at that uh soon.
Paul, you were putting your mic on there.
Um well, you you can have the choice if you want to re-allocate things in your current work plan. Um that goes through June of this year. You can do that or in the next two meetings, you will be evaluating what next year's work plan is. And what your priorities are, which is why we time this initial review for April so that you've got your full slate of possible things. Uh for starting in July. So that's up to you guys, however you'd like to do it. But if you do decide to prioritize it now. Then we would like to sort of have you evaluate and tell us what's not on the list that you've currently adopted.
Um Paul, do we have a a a package of amendments that we're gonna deal with in June?
Not, well, you started to work on the T D R. That's that would be the the core of the next one.
Old I Z business as far as I'm concerned, but yeah.
We're still on old I Z business. Um Monica?
So I just um wanna uh ask that when we do bring this up, I very much appreciate Roseanne's comment. And I, there has to be a way that local business can be supported in this. This should not be um. Something that harms local business. I'm sure there's many creative ideas to do that, like, you know, free buses to the new U-Mall. No, just some, I think that um finding ways within a regu- from a regulation perspective that can make sure that local businesses um are. Uh supported when we go on campus.
Just, I had a question for Roland, Roland, uh as a question of scale. How how many rooms uh do you think you will have in this? Training center?
Yeah, that's a very good question. We 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 didn't even uh get too far ahead of ourselves and 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 design a building or anything like that yet. So. Um at at this point, it's really just the concept. Um we we need to figure out what that exactly means. And it depends a little bit on on the demand uh that we would have to calculate out. Currently, we're, you know, thinking sort of in the. Range of a dozen rooms or something like that, but um I we we that's kind of a a wild guess right now. We don't quite. Quite know what the capacity is and also it needs to make economic sense uh as well to kind of assume it on a scale.
Well, quick question for you, Roland. Did I I don't know if I heard you correctly earlier. Did you say you guys have had problems finding hotel space for people in this situation?
We 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 have, as a matter of fact, we've we've had to put people in in Williston or further out um and or or multiple employees. That were spread around uh different different uh places around town. Um it's it's been, it's been pretty hard to find hotel space and uh that's that's, yeah, kind of goes right with. Um finding housing really at the same time.
Okay, um so.
I, um it's my understanding that part of the problem with the technology parks, the way they're zoned, is that not only can you not have residences. But you can't have restaurants, you can't have delis. You you know, you're basically there by yourself, being whatever you're zoned.
I I believe that's right. I don't I don't know about restaurants and delis, but um we are, we are putting our own cafe in only for our own use. Because we, as far as we know, we cannot offer that to the public anyway, but we wouldn't want to do that anyways. Yeah.
They're allowed today in in areas like that as an accessory use. So Kestrel Coffee, for example, is inside the building. That's across the street from you. It's accessory to everything else going on. It wouldn't be able to be its own standalone business. That is, or or building essentially, that is uh attracting from elsewhere unless it was clearly. The part of the campus. The the intent is it's serving principally the employees and visitors there. Not drawing people to the business park, generally speaking, as as a visitor. But I know that's something the commission's wanted to explore a little bit as well in in prior years, but what's that right balance so that you're not? Creating a destination where people come from all over Chitting County to go to dinner there. But that you're providing sufficient services for all the people who go there every day so that they're not driving out at lunch to go, you know, driving back and forth all the time.
There there used to be a gym there where you could have a fruit juice or a coffee or something after you've sweated your guts out.
Monica?
Just so I understand, Paul, um we saw a a master plan revisioning document there with the lighter brown. Um with the current regs, if we were to make this a priority, go through our path. Um in this particular case, does it, would the new uh regulations that we recommend be able to be implemented? On something that is already to that point, or is this gonna be another case of?
So what um the folks at On Logic, they they showed you their their sort of long-term, small M master plan. What they actually came in to get an approval for was only the darker colored building.
Okay.
They showed the rest of the D R B to say, this is where we think we might wanna go, but they, at the time, there was no provision that would allow them to. Take advantage of sort of being vested for ten years. So they only applied actually for the one building.
Okay.
So anything that they wanted to do to expand in any of those lighter toned buildings, whether that is expansion to the manufacturing. And an expansion to the office or this facility would be a new approval under whatever rules that they're when they're ready to apply for. So it would be. Um if if their timing works out with whatever change you consider and ultimately if you decide to make one. Then it would be fully eligible at that time.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Okay, so I mean, it sounds like people are generally interested and the question is, um is this gonna be added to our work plan? Like immediately or when we talk about our priorities for the item starting in two months?
So I think my suggestion would be that you have given the direction that you're supportive of it, and I think that's all you need to do for tonight. This is just an initial review and then you can discuss at your next meeting when you start into your next work plan. If you wanna say we wanna work on it. Immediately, immediately, then immediately in the next six weeks, then you can, and otherwise you can put it on the, starting in July, work plan.
Good, well, I think that's that's what we're doing. We're generally interested, we'll address where it fits in the schedule when we look at the work plan.
For twenty-two, not twenty-three.
Well, twenty-three starts in two months.
Well, thank you very much for coming in. Okay, we have a second item here about multiple, multiple homes on a single property.
Yep, so we have um a request from the Wright family to allow additional um housing on their property. They are located on the east side of Heinsberg Road. They're currently surrounded on the east side with the I O district, with the industrial open space district. And then on, immediately across the road is R seven N C. Um as they're currently zoned, they have three res- single-family residences on an approximately ten-acre um parcel. Um again, this is something that has to be considered, not for a single property, but in a broader planning um policy sense. Um Paul has pulled up a viewer of of the area. You can see eighty-nine running along the top. Um the D R facility, the Hill Farm property is on your left, and Paul has just circled the right um property kind of in the middle.
I have a very upfront question. The R seven N C zoning. Is being challenged by eight thirty-five Heinsberg Road LLC. Shouldn't we be very ca- careful not to do anything else with R seven N C until? That litigation has been settled? I mean, it's some judice, say, if you like.
Was there a?
Not, m- maybe it can go into the into the F Y twenty-three work plan, but. I think we should know what the outcome of that litigation is before we start. Um giving the Wright family uh. Oh, that what they want is is doable. It may well be, but uh.
What, I think that's a fair point, Michael, absolutely. And I think for the purposes of this evening. The, similar to the last conversation, this, the the, if you were to choose to take the subject up, there may be multiple ways of addressing it. Today is really just an introduction to the request that they've got and you can decide if you want to. Take it up immediately. You might wanna say, let's take it up after the litigation is done. We did wanna, um Kelsey, did you wanna? Um before the rights get started, just show that there's another family that had expressed a similar um question in another part of the city who. They they didn't um choose to come to a a meeting, but they expressed similar issue and just to give you context that it's a.
So there's a similar, similarly situated property that is a slightly different um issue. It is near the intersection of Lime. So there's a similar, similarly situated property that is a slightly different um issue. It is near the intersection of Limekill Road and Airport Parkway. Kind of the opposite side of the north side of the city. It's those parcels immediately south of the um. Multi-families, so.
Right, so this red line.
That's the line between um, I think it's mixed industrial commercial is below that line. And a residential zone is above that line. I'm not remembering right now if it's R twelve or something else. R four. Um, so they, but a residential district, but with the, the way that the line was drawn, they are in a, in a commercial. Um, industrial district.
Right, so you've got four properties immediately south of this line that are single-family homes that are. Not, i- that, that they are in a commercial industrial district that does not allow residential homes, so they would not be able to expand, et cetera, et cetera.
And my, my understanding there has been.
Different, but similar issue that.
And my understanding is that they have come in and just asked questions in the past. Um, they've never made a formal request. But it is a very similar um situation where single-family homeowners in those lots are not able to. You know, make their home into a duplex, um, anything like, anything along those lines um in that district.
Sorry, can we go back to the Wright property?
I think he's doing it.
Now, does it, is it contiguous with um? Is that the Lane Press?
Yes.
So that is in the, um, an industrial park in Meadowlands is below it, right?
The three parcels surrounding it, all on the east side of Heinsberg Road are, well, the, actually, all of those parcels on the east side of Heinsberg Road are zoned industrial open space. The Wright's farm in the middle is the only one currently used as a residential property. The others are all large industrial developments.
I ask because we have been talking about the possibility of housing in the industrial parks. And if that's something that we're gonna move ahead on. The, the Wright's question may be moot because it'll be allowed if we can get there.
Yep, and that's something, just to reiterate where we are in this process, this is the initial review of what's being requested, what has been raised by the rights. Um, as the issue that they're dealing with for the planning commission to then discuss in the future, if, if it is so. If the commission decides it's warranted, how it could be changed, what would be changed, um, how it affects the greater area. And all of those questions. Yeah, Monica.
So, can, can I suggest maybe the, the rights are here?
Yeah.
Let them do their presentation if that's.
Yeah, that's, so what we did with the last, go ahead.
Yeah. Is your microphone on? There's a little green light. If it's on, you're good to go.
Okay, good. Um, just a quick rundown of what we're trying to do is um, the small square you see there is what's left of our family farm. Our family farm used to be where Lane Press is, Donna Power is, and it went right up to the uh quarry. Part of the farm got cut off when the interstate went through where Technology Park is now. That's the old Willis Farm. We used to rent that every year. Pay it and fill the big white barn full of hay. We had our dairy cows here on this farm. We didn't grow any crops on the farm. But that's where we uh had all of our dairy cows. We used to milk two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and thirty cows at all times. We had another dairy farm in South Hero, and uh we grew most of our crops down in the interval in Burlington where the Belt Line is. So as you can see, as the city grew, we kind of got out of the farming because we kind of got enclosed in. But anyways, um, I raised the fourth generation of Wrights up there on the farm. And um, my kids are now old enough where they're having kids and they would like to come home and raise their family on what's left of the farm. So I'd like to be able to give each one of my kids a half acre so they could build a house and continue the tradition. I'm not trying to put in a development or anything like that. I'd just like to continue a family tradition that's been going on for four generations.
You have three children?
I have three children. I live on the farm with my two sisters. We each have, I have one of the old tenant houses. My sis, one of my sisters lives in our old house in the middle, and my other sister lives in our grandparents' house on the end.
Wonderful.
We're talking about the middle box, right?
Yeah. Yes.
That's down here.
Yep, and as it is currently zoned, you're allowed one dwelling unit per three acres, um, and they have just about ten. Um, so they have fully built it out with their, the three existing single-family houses under the current regulations.
Do you ever sense when you wanna do this building, building these houses?
Um, well, uh, my son's expecting his first son in a month and a half.
We might not make that one.
Right, I, I understand that, but you know, um, I, I guess I've kind of dragged my feet long enough with the coronavirus and everything that hit, it kind of pushed everything out. Um, I'm getting up there in age, uh, and I've gotta get going and, and get it done if I would like to continue this. Um, you know, I went through the school system, my sisters did. Uh, my oldest sister was one of the first classes at the high school. Um, all of my nieces and nephews and my kids went to the school system. You know, we, we've just been here a long time. They just wanna continue the tradition, that's all.
Okay, um, Ted? Oh, yeah, Monica, yeah, Monica.
Um, so, um, I just want to remind everyone that when we did make the zoning changes, I noticed that in this request. The zoning change across the street was referenced, and when we made that zoning change, we were using, well, so that it wasn't. In my mind, a spot zoning issue, we were using the compa- comp plans um future land use map. And this area that he's talking about, when you look at that map. You know, I mean, this is what we based that other zoning change on, and. The um map eleven would refer to this one as medium to higher density principally non-residential. It doesn't say no residential. I'm, I'm just saying future land zone, and this is what we based. Um, the other zoning changes being acceptable. So if we use this map, this is my recollection. Um, it seems to me like this is an appropriate request. Um, maybe personally, um. I would uh think that it would uh be an excellent place for higher density, but one doesn't have to build that. Um, but it seems to me that it's um appropriate based on what we did before. Using um the comp plan future land map. So I would certainly be supportive of um considering this. I do think that um, given what Michael said about us potentially being very interested in this business campus concept. Um, to keep that in mind as an option as well potentially for something that's right on the border. But I would certainly support um further discussing this um.
Okay, um, I don't know who was first. Very polite.
Well, I, uh, well, I had a question with regard to if it is melded with, with Meadowlands zoning-wise. Would it, would it require some industrial building or it can be exclusively residential?
Today, the regulations say that you can have one home per three acres, so it's, that, that's where they fall under. Um, many of the property owners in Meadowland, not surprisingly, have chosen to do a. Office park rather than put three homes, one home every three acres. This is a little bit of a, it's, it's the originator and now an outlier to what's, to what's around it. Um, so, so it, you, you can write however you choose to do, but today that's not a requirement, but you have to have industrial.
Okay, so what is their limitation rate now on that property? They cannot build any more homes on that at this point?
Right, they could relocate homes, but they couldn't build more homes today.
Right.
Um, they could, they could have accessory apartments, but not, but not additional homes. The, I, you know, I think a, an interesting and tricky part of this particular one is. Not so much this property, but the zoning district generally, and how you balance the needs of. For housing and for um property like this with the needs in some parts of our industrial parks. To make sure that they're separated from homes um to a certain extent for certain uses because. Um, it becomes harder and harder for certain kinds of businesses to locate if there's new neighborhoods right next to them. That, you know, eventually the neighbors say, well, we don't want that kind of truck business at three in the morning bias. I'm not saying that's necessarily the case for this property, but for the zoning district as a whole, that's an interesting challenge.
And the discussion of that particular issue about industrial zoning and do, does South Burlington need something that's more of an industrial only? Zoning has been on the, the work plan um for fiscal year twenty-two. Um, to be a point of discussion between the planning commission and the economic development committee, and that's something that can still be taken up in, in twenty-three if it's re-adopted in the new. Work plan. Um, so that greater discussion of a balance between industrial and residential and. How and when and to what extent they should be separated from each other. Um, is a, is a greater conversation that the city council has already prioritized and the planning commission has as well.
I have another question.
Just quick, quick clarification. This zoning district, is it the same as the one that on Logic? Their new building would be in, or is it?
No.
No, it's different.
This is industrial open space. On Logic is a mixed industrial commercial.
Right, similar but different.
Similar but different.
Um, we established a, um, I'm not gonna say it correctly. We established a cutout. It does not pertain, pertain to this, but we established a cutout in the SEQ. And I'm just wondering food for thought, um, maybe you guys can look at, would something like that be an opportunity in unique situations? Where the landowners have not um converted yet. Who's to say a future generation wouldn't decide to go the IO route, um, but might a cutout? Be an option for scenarios like this, since it's not committing to a larger neighborhood that, yes, down the road could cause an issue for. A campus type possibility. That might have cut out.
Be just for one property there in this case.
Would a property owner have potentially the right to the carve-out?
Yeah, it's an interesting idea, and you know, maybe something to consider if there's like a small footprint or something. Could it be different than? I don't know, we've only used the cutout in that one circumstance so far, but.
I would think this is a pretty unique situation. Uh, I don't know. Paul, you might be able to answer this question. Is this something we, we would think we would see again or anywhere else?
This circumstance of, um, there, there are a small handful of circumstances like this around the city. Um, there's this one here, um, for anybody who knew, um, Bill Semansky, our former city manager. That he had a house, um, just as you're going down the hill on Williston Road down towards the Moneybrook in the town of Williston. There's a house there that's on, that also a former farm lot, um, that's in an industrial district. There's probably like. And then the other example that we showed you up, um, Limekill Road, so there's maybe. Uh, ten or fewer total properties or homes to which this is a, a mismatch of a pre-existing. Um, residential activity in what later became a industrial or commercial district. So it's, it's pr- pretty small numbers, um, which is sort of cuts both ways. On the one hand, you know, you'd wanna be careful not to have a solution that all of a sudden changes an entire district into something that is not what you meant to do. On the other hand. There may be ways to be creative and, and think about how do we address pre-existing situations.
Okay, um, I mean, I'm hearing generally positive comments. Is this something that we wanna kind of pursue on our work plan?
I, I think we should pursue this whole issue of. Resident, residential use in an industrial park, which, um, I know the affordable housing committee is, is. Keen on because it will provide um an opportunity for housing where none exists right now. And uh. It's an interesting idea.
I, I guess for what Paul just mentioned, I don't know if there's some way that we could look at all the potential situations and figure out if there's a way. We could craft some language that might offer an exemption in a situation similar to these.
So it sounds like people have some different ideas about how we could even approach it, um, which I, I think maybe even beyond what we need to do for this evening. Is there anything else you need from us, Kelsey or Paul?
No, I think that, that's sufficient. Um, it will be uh considered as part of the fiscal year twenty-three. Priority list that, that may become the work plan.
Great, okay.
I have another.
Was there a public comment? Did somebody turn their mic on? Okay, I need, well, I think, well, Monica?
No, sorry, it wasn't, it's a.
And I hope you'll keep the, um. I can't think of the. Part of the farm.
Yes, the silo.
Silo, there we are, sorry. It's a focal point of, from Wheeler Park.
It houses four self, self. Are you, are you still haying the part that is green?
No, um. I uh actually mowed it all. Takes me whole day, but I get it mowed once a week. We did quite a bit of work down back. Um, we had to get a, a, a permit to uh years ago to uh. Where the, you see the garage was where the old part of the barn was. The barn was falling down, so they allowed me to tear that down and put up a garage. But uh, the old barn used to be there and right on the end of it was the manure pit, so they allowed me to uh. Bring in Phil and fill that in and level the land off and, and, you know, make it usable. I didn't. As my kids were growing up, they'd ride their four-wheelers down there in their snowmobiles, and I didn't want any of them to get hurt in the old manure pit, so we. We kind of filled it in and, and put it all to grass, and i- it's a nice spot down there. Um, as you can see, we put a big solar field in there down there three years ago, and that takes care of uh my end of the property. But um. No, the silo will be there for years and years to come. It's kind of a, it's kind of a landmark. Yeah, it's been there a long time.
Yeah.
I was just a little boy when they built that. They came, they came from Canada and put that up.
Um, so it looks like we have a comment in the back. Do you wanna come up some? Sure.
No, those, those tractor trailers belong to me. Um, been there. Like I said, it used to be a farm. We always had big equipment there. Um, and uh I haul fuel. My main business is I've been hauling fuel to the commercial side of the airport for twenty years. I haul jet fuel in. And um, we keep them there, probably. Just after nine eleven, uh, they formed a, a, a thing called CTPA, Commercial Trade Partners Against Terrorism. And um, we became part of that. Uh, the um homeland security came down and they did a background check and. Everything about us, and they just liked the fact that we kept the trucks there on my personal property as added security. Because um, as everybody knows, a, a fuel tanker could be used as a weapon of mass destruction. Oh, they really like security to be high and alert on keeping them in regulated spaces. No, they're empty. Provide security because they're there where I live.
So I think we wanna put, kind of move on with our land development discussion here, but if you wanna, I mean, so I think we're all set.
Okay.
And, you know, if you wanna continue to talk.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
So I had a, um, when we started this conversation, uh, we said something about it being our every six months or something. Um, I know that there were other people that came to us during IZ asking for some zoning uh reconsideration, and we had to say. We're in IZ, we can't do anything, and I don't know if they were contacted again to let them know that we were gonna be. Having this agenda item. So the one I wanted to, um, that stands out to me is, uh, there was a gentleman. is uh there was a gentleman that had something to do with the um medical related business at the corner of Kennedy and Dorset. And it was, it's currently zoned to require medical, and I think they were looking to have it open up to be broader than just that. So um they're not here to represent themselves. I'm remembering the case. I just thought as we're discussing other people that came to us, that is one that I think would be interesting um and fair to address whether the person wants it anymore or not. Given what that neighbor or that how busy that intersection is, it seems like a worthwhile conversation.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't know that we followed up with them. Are we um ready to move on to the T D R stuff? That's next, right? Okay, yeah. Of course, this went to sleep. Um, yes, review the prelim- preliminary working draft of the T D R. And we have a pretty extensive memo in our packet.
Yeah, so just as a uh point of introduction, I wrote a memo that has a few major questions um for guiding kind of the next draft or direction of the draft that I provided. Also open to any comments about other things, but the big priorities uh for the commission to dis- to discuss and give feedback on at this point is um should the residential primarily residential districts are twelve, are seven and C? And are seven be receiving areas? How should T D R use be incentivized in specific areas? And there's a couple of ways to do that where that was discussed. And the third is that the state, the Vermont State Statute also allows T D Rs to be used to to reduce minimum lot sizes. Um, just that's sort of the order that I was hoping to discuss them in. Um. If anyone has any.
I just have a quick clarification that I wanted to, on the first question. We wanted to clarify. We talked about the R twelve, the R seven N C and the R seven districts. I think we wanted to clarify that we meant within the transit overlay district. So in the core areas of the city, because there are for each of these, some some more out there parts of the city, right?
Yeah, so for example, there's a section of R seven and C that's located at the intersection of Kennedy and Heinsberg Road, Kennedy Drive and Heinsberg Road, um that is within the transit overlay uh district, and there are sections of R seven and C that are not and would not be discussed for the use of T D Rs today.
Same for the other two.
And the same for the R seven and the R twelve. That's just the one that popped to mind because it is at the intersection of two fairly major roads.
Why would we not want to um increase density outside the transit overlay district? If if there's an opportunity to do so.
It's just, it's a point to be discussed. Um, and at this point, it has some greater implications for an issue that you raised earlier. For a property outside the transit overlay district.
And everything within the transit overlay district is has inclusionary, so we're not creating a competing situation, which is great.
Inclusionary now applies citywide in all all circumstances, citywide.
And I I did know in the short memo that we, this is an initial, an initial working draft that I put together. Um, it has not been checked for compatibility with inclusionary, how the math would work out with different um density, the the bonus densities and things like that. Um, all of those things and other cross references have not been worked out at this point. Um, but that would be something that would have to happen before anything was finalized.
I I think I remember we we kind of touched on it last time. There were areas we were going to exclude from T D Rs. But we did not, they're not called out anywhere here. Is it pretty much assume that anything that's not listed is?
Correct. Yep. Anything that's not listed is is not a receiving area. Generally, the goal was to maintain the T D R program as it exists in the southeast quadrant and then expand to other areas that are mixed, generally mixed use, um mixed use areas in other parts of the city. It does not touch as a general rule, some of the lower density residential, primarily residential or residential only areas.
Is so as drafted is fine for those transit overlay districts. Or pieces of the districts.
As always, have my comments. Um, so in terms of the um incentivizing, if we're just going to jump wherever. Um, personally, I would rather not see incentivizing in terms of density, but in terms of um owner occupied. We did have a motion in the commission to look, to ask you guys to look at ways that owner occupied could be fit in somewhere somehow. I know that we it seemed to agree that it would not be appropriate for the general P U D. But I seem to recall a T D R being a possibility. And then I didn't, unless I missed it, I didn't see mention of that.
It's not specifically called out in in this draft. It is something that could be explored further. We were at this point trying to keep the working draft fairly streamlined um and simple. Um, but I do have, I do remember the same, the same conversation where you had raised the possibility of a T D R being sent from somewhere like the southeast quadrant into another area. Getting more value for an owner, an owned unit, um a purchased unit over a rental unit. It's not something that we've been able to have a full conversation with um the city attorney about at this point. Everybody's a bit swamped with everything going on.
That that's just my only comment that I would, I would personally, and I just would pass along to you guys. I was surprised. Um, and the housing, the affordable housing committee has to still work through their draft, but when they were going through their um requests for the ARPA money. I was very surprised that there is a strong preference for support of ownership, owner occupied units with that ARPA funding over supporting um any kind of rental scenario. I was very surprised and it's it kind of came from a cross section of the group. So I really do think if there is a way, it's definitely worth exploring the possibilities.
I'd be interested to know how other commissioners feel about prioritizing owner occupied versus rentals um and versus other ways that.
I mean, it it sounds like a good idea, Monica, but the flip side of that is, you know, we we need some lower income rental housing. Are are we at danger of losing some of that?
This is why I was surprised at the affordable housing committees, you know. For ARPA money, you know, their preference, but I think that there are, there are, I don't want to speak to that completely, but I know that there are, there's so much being established. There's so many great organizations. There is so much happening with with that, but it it's what is seriously missing is this missing middle piece. People are paying rent that's higher than mortgages and then they're not staying here. So you know, I'm not saying only, but I personally, um, I fear if we incentivize density with these T D Rs and just, we're going to end up with lots of rental units and then really expensive homes that nobody can afford. So somehow, I think it's just somehow in the mix.
I'm not quite sure. Why do you think it would drive rental rather than ownership?
If we, well, the way that um this is uh listed in here, it doesn't say for rental, but it's saying um I'm going to get the math wrong on it, but the that it would encourage uh that perhaps, you know, one unit in the in the S E Q would be equal to three units for the same T D R. And I'm just looking at, I mean, what currently is being built. There are no owner occupied being built, nothing on Shelburne Road is owner occupied.
And just
So.
As a point of clarification, Michael, I think you're you're right that the the way the draft is written is it's completely agnostic to rental versus owner. It's just incentivizing in certain areas that in the past, you know, five to ten plus years have have been more rentals than ownership.
So I guess, you know, we've asked staff to like help us work through this issue and if we're even allowed to do that. So I guess I would, I think it might be helpful if we maybe hear back if it's even something we can do.
Yeah, I mean, is that a show of hands of is this T D R the right place to even have the conversation? Because I don't want to create a hurdle if if you know, that doesn't seem like a good fit in other people's minds. If if legally they came up with a solution. Are people here inclined to want to see that tied into the T D R program?
So are you suggesting that um one T D R would get more dwelling units if they were owner owner occupied? Rather than if they were rental units?
I don't know, maybe, I don't know.
Quite difficult to do. Because you're telling, you're telling the developer.
It can become legally complex very quickly.
Right, I think there's
I think we should, well, we should look at it if it's feasible, but I I think it's got a lot of, as you say, legal pitfalls and it's very prescriptive from a developer, uh builder's point of view.
And just as a quick point that comes to mind, it there would be a question in my mind whether that is something that would have to be enforced going for, like if you bought one of those condos, could you not then, when you moved to Arizona, you know, when you retired, could you not rent it out? You know, there's, there's a lot of issues that are raised. Something is sort of a a legal equivalent of perpetually affordable. Would you have perpetually owner occupied? I think there's a lot of difficulty there, but not the city attorney and that's something that we can, we can explore.
I guess, I guess the question I have is, do you are you concerned with the the style of housing, do you think, or really the the ownership type? Because I'm like, it's, I I mean, I completely see like, okay, if we look at the city and these units are going from the southeast quadrant where there's a lot of kind of detached, maybe single family homes to a denser area where there's maybe more apartment style homes. It is, it's a very different type of unit, uh unit, dwelling unit.
Yeah, no, I'm just more thinking about the twenty-five-year-old that finally twenty-six-year-old that might, you know, with the help of some parents, be able to actually get, you know, a small down payment for something. If the mortgage to buy a small condo is lower than the more the um rental of an apartment that they're throwing money out the window and never getting back. You know, it's that, it's that, because if they can't if they're looking at that and they have the opportunity to stop throwing that money out the window, but they can't buy it here, they're going to buy elsewhere. They're going to move and they're going to go elsewhere. They're going to go to Williston. They're going to go wherever else. So to me, it's just, it's more the price point. And it seems like that that price point can be in this overlay district. Um, it's an opportunity.
So two things for you to consider in this. One, um, the language within what is the enabling statutes on T D Rs, which is what we'll need to look up as to whether this can be done. I think the 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 broader planning question, and I think this is a very healthy conversation that you're having, is to look through this through the lens of um federal fair housing law and is there an unintended consequence of 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 a policy like this? Having a disproportionate impact on some populations than others. And anytime we're talking about rental versus ownership, that's a tricky conversation because there are certain populations that might have better access to be able to buy a home than other populations. And so being very, very thoughtful about what is the exact planning goal that you're seeking to achieve is really critical in a conversation like this about um how are you making sure that your policy that you're advancing is in the interests of affordability across the board? And not uh having, and again, unintended consequence of some populations over others. And that's our federal responsibility.
Well, is there anything in in this draft that would fall afoul of the Fair Housing Act? Have you had an had a le- legal review of it from that standpoint? I mean, transferable development rights are
alright. Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say broadly speaking, the the uh there are transferable development rights programs all across the country. We always need to be mindful of the specifics of South Burlington that um the area which happens to have the most open space, therefore sending areas is also demographically one of the wealthier parts of the city. And so I I think it's fully enabled to do a T D R program. And as you have done with prior zoning amendments, being very thoughtful as to the exact purpose of why you are sending potential development from the southeast quadrant to a place like Shelburne Road or Williston Road. There can be very appropriate planning purposes for it. Um, and in theory, there could be non-appropriate reasons for it, but keeping in mind this specific bringing housing near transit is is a good thing. Um, so I just, y- yes, I think it can pass muster and yes, we would of course do a legal review of it.
And I have a connection to that too.
I was just going to say, there's, there's nothing else in, there's nothing in the T D R draft that has anything to say about the end user of the housing. Um, which is what's being implicated, which could be implicated by the rental versus ownership question um written, written into the draft as it stands. But as Paul has mentioned, it hasn't gone through that specific legal review at this point as a working draft.
And I've only read it once, so I have a few comments, but um you'll get some.
My concern, Monica, and I I think it's a noble aim, but my concern is trying to dictate the market is tough. Um, I I think that we we get, we go down a slippery slope of slope if we're trying to dictate the market. And I also think that that, you know, the threshold, i- if it's you know, if I'm a developer, I'm looking, okay, I can get an extra T D R for their owners, or I can just take the next level down and just make rental, you know, again, if it's the easier path, they might just go to the rental. Might drive it the other way is what I'm saying.
I'd like to learn from the people about, I mean, there is a developer on the Affordable Housing Committee and he was part of the quest to find ways to
To incentivize ownership, yeah.
Well, not through T D Rs, I don't want to mislead. That's, I'm just saying, I was very surprised. But what I would say is that in terms of what Paul's saying. You know, we're taking a unit out of the S E Q, right? That's where it has been. And now we've changed, so we're sending it out of the S E Q now. In the S E Q, um, if there were to be many, many houses built there, the prices probably would have been lower, right? Maybe theoretically, right? But now we're, we're limiting our building there and we're sending that house, that unit out. Um, for anyone to ever aspire to live in the S E Q. To go from renting where you cannot save for a mortgage, you have no asset. The the, we're creating such a a difficult challenge for anyone to be able to move into the S E Q. If they have something more reasonable to purchase that they could have if we were building up lots and lots in the S E Q, but we're not. So if they have, you know, people need assets to be able to to make up this, you know, go to go to that next place. So to me, it's an equalizer to say it's a house. It's whether it's here or here. You know, it's, it's a, it's a more likely, it's a ninety percent like more likely um owner occupied unit. It was there, can be over here. We shouldn't be like downgrading it, if you will, to a rental because it's, oh, not in the S E Q. And I know that they're not defined right now as owner occupied, so I'm not trying to say that.
I'd offer to be very careful to not talk about downgrading to rental because there are many, many you know, that that's a very viable living situation for a lot of people. I just want to make sure that we're having the conversation around equal access to housing for everybody. I just
Yeah, and and I I just want to pick up on something Monica said. It's not that we're taking a housing unit out of the S E Q. It's that we're conserving point eight three of an acre for each of those. So, you know, we're, housing isn't everything in the S E Q. We have uh the T D R program was established to help us conserve. If if the landowner wishes to, by selling those development rights. So I think we should not be conflating the two things. Or saying that if you if you sell the T D R, you're removing housing potential. You're conserving some land as well.
Yeah, no, and I, I think maybe you misunderstood Monica's point. I, I think what Monica was saying is that right now through the TDR program, it's doing what you're saying. But it also moves that development out of the natural resource protection zone into another location in the southeast quadrant. So, so the housing unit would go into the southeast quadrant in another spot. But what we're talking about here is instead of it going from the natural resource protection into a receiving zone in the SEQ, it would be going to.
Where we would get.
One of these other locations where the, and that's why I brought up the type of housing. Because I think Monica's point is, is very valid, the type of housing that might have been built in that receiving zone in the southeast quadrant, might be a very different type of housing.
Yes.
And housing experience.
If we're moving into the, these zones that, that we're talking about, we're gonna get density and lower cost. Higher density and lower cost, particularly if we start building multifamily buildings. Um, you know, that's, that's the plus for me anyway.
You know, I think, oh, go ahead.
I, I think it's a, I totally agree with you, Monica. That we're missing that middle in, in the equity part. We'll take it, I, you know, keep wrestling with it and I don't have an, an answer. You know, I just, part of me thinks that the city needs to come up with purchasing land. And have, and have, have a habitat for humanity, build homes, very, very modest homes or whatever. But I don't know, I'm not sure if we can solve that in this document right now.
Yeah, I'm not asking that we do, I just, I'd love to have more expertise, other people. I mean, we're just all in a, in a silo here talking, you know, I'd love to have somebody come in and break it down for us. Is it, are there legal issues or the reasons we can't? If we do it, how, you know, I, I would really love to, to understand that.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with trying, as I said, we should try to incentivize ownership versus rental. I just think it's gonna be quite difficult legally. And I think we will engender quite a lot of opposition from people who build and want to build what the, what they see as the market. But you know, maybe I'm wrong, but we should try.
Just as a very quick clarification, I don't think anyone assumes this, but just to make it totally clear. The TDR program does not require if you get the three units to one unit, that, that, that those be rentals. It's just the current market in the areas where you would get that incentivized bonus. Our, are generally rentals at this point. It doesn't mean economically that that's something that wouldn't change in the future. There's nothing in this draft that says like, the buildings that would be built with these extra units have to be rentals. I, I don't think anyone made that assumption, but I just wanna make sure that was clear that there is no direct ownership to rental and the rental gets some sort of bonus, that's not in this draft.
Can I ask, what would the most efficient way for us to get more knowledge about this be? Like who, is there a group of, I know that, obviously there's the legal side, which would be asking a question. But what's another way that we could kind of have a, I think it would benefit us beyond just the TDRs. You know, what, if we're going to do anything to try to incentivize and make seek, if, for complan research sake, you know, if we're going to have a conversation about the missing middle and owner occupied opportunities, what would the best resource be for us to, to learn from?
I think Paul and, and Kelsey should be the ones to find that expertise and bring it to us.
We're more than happy to, to do any, any of that. I think, you know, that it's, it's a, it's an onion. There's a lot of pieces of the puzzle about why it is that fourplexes aren't being built. And why it is that today the market is very much towards rental. There's, there's a lot of different pieces of the puzzle. And I think maybe something for you to consider in, you know, next year's policy priorities is, should unpacking this issue be a citywide priority? Whether it's the Planning Commission that's doing it, the Affordable Housing Committee, some other group, the council staff, whatever. You know, I think that's, that's one of the reasons why the city council and, and city manager's office are going through policy priority work now annually to say, what are the big issues to tackle? So that it's not given the, you know, what I'm hearing is not given the lip service of one meeting, oh, look, we've solved housing, now on to the next subject.
But isn't the preponderance of rental units because so many people, they can't to buy a $300,000 house, they come up, they gotta come up with $30,000 or $60,000 of cash and, you know.
It's, it's very much a factor in that. Michael and I, and I think in recent years, or, or I guess I should say in the last decade following 2008 crisis, there was also a lot of, a lot of the, the mortgages and loans that developers could get were very much skewed against ownership because, you know, they never knew if people's, people's individual mortgages, they had to have more upfront. It's, it's interesting that if we look at sort of cross sections of South Burlington history, it's gone back and forth. There was a time in the sixties when it was mostly rental, then the seventies and eighties was a lot of ownership. And then it went back and then the 2000s were ownership with, most of Farrell Street was built, or many buildings on Farrell Street were built as ownership. And then the last decade has been almost entirely rental. There's a couple of buildings now going up at South Village that are the first multiplex ownership units that have been built in a decade in the city, so.
I think there's a, across from the Red Barn deli on Heinsberg Road, I understand that is changing over from apartments to condos.
I think I may have heard that also, yeah.
The Antelarken property and so, and I think we have a lot of older locations around the city. So going back, you know, market, we might start to see at least more former apartments right now as condos.
And that's another place, you know, as we think about things like ARPA funds and others, it may be that a cost effective way to help advance homeownership might be through structures like that. Take an existing building that's somewhat depreciated, but it's still in really good shape. And help that become an ownership to get to more entry level ownership.
That would be an interesting, if, if we could have an incentive for owners of apartments to sell them to the people who are living there. Where I come from, it's called sectional title. Basically, you divide up the whole building into separate titles for each.
That, that actually just happened in Waterbury. I don't know if you folks have been to Waterbury recently, but if you get off the exit, go into Waterbury, there's all those little houses there. Those were rentals and are now being sold. They're fantastic, small little houses, actually John Hale built those. But I was just thinking, something like that is the type of building we would love to incentivize cause that's probably gonna be an ownership. You know, so along what you were talking about, Monica, if there's some way we, again, it's, it's tough because land is so expensive here. If there's some way we can incentivize the type of building like cottage houses, Kirby cottages, something like that, that we know is gonna be more likely to be ownership than rental, but it's a land issue.
That's, yeah, that's not gonna happen in the over, the over.
Overlay, no.
Urban. That one.
Urban design overlay.
Urban design overlay, that's, isn't the land.
Yeah, no, there's not.
But yeah, so what, what I would, the other comment I have then separate from the ownership is that because this is new and I mean, I've, I recall hearing, I don't know, developers or somebody say that purchasing the TDR wasn't so much, the financial end of it wasn't so much the hurdle. If they had the opportunity to just get more density, sure, they'll pay the X. I would personally suggest starting this broader look without any kind of incentivizing on a TDR. Let the marketplace, you know, let the, the market keep, like, let's keep the TDRs, you know, one unit for one unit. Try to streamline it that way, the sooner we can get the TDR sold, you know, the better for everyone and the better for the permanent conservation. So my, my other comment would just be, why start with that kind of incentive? Let's just try it as a continuing a one for one.
That's okay, Monica, but one of the people that I spoke to out in Seattle, the guy who, in the local government who's in charge of this, he said, then, don't just use simple arithmetic because it's a planning tool. And if you want more housing in area A than you want in area B, do what we're, do what we're doing here, which is give more than one dwelling unit for a TDR and in the other place where you don't want them, give them less. You need two TDRs to get one dwelling unit. You know, so I think it is a, it is a useful planning tool to direct development where we want it. Whether it's rental or ownership, I'm, that's not the issue, but we should try and use this TDR program as a planning tool to the extent that we can. I know we might, there may be fewer TDRs sold because there weren't, you know, it's three for one or two for one. But in the end, we may sell more that way. We don't know.
What's, I would, I would think that it would be easier to evolve a program from a one to one to a one incentive plus incentive versus starting with an incentive. And then being like, wow, that's good, we could, you know, we could pull this back. That, that it seems like it's something to maybe step into. We're just, you know, walk before we can run, especially since we're stepping into a new.
Yeah, so the current TDR program is more along those lines, except in more limited areas. So the difference between what exists and what you're talking about would only be expanding the receiving areas and possibly changing the sort of lot coverage calculations and some other things. So that would be, that, that program has existed just only within the southeast quadrant. So are you saying to keep, that your preference would be to keep the math the same as one unit to one unit? And the testing, be testing the expanded receiving area and not any additional arithmetic?
That's my, that's my recommendation for a start. And if there's other incentives like higher, you know, additional height, you know, that with the TDR unit, you could, you know, go higher or there'll be other things, but not multiple units. So just my two cents, I've.
That's what I was just gonna bring up, the next thing is, is, is height. Is the five story what we want? I, I don't, I'm raising it, I'm not, I mean, I'd like to go up as high as possible without any hidden views or whatever now. And that can happen. But is, are we limit making limitations on having it to be five?
So, so a couple of notes on that. One, after five, you're likely gonna be in a different method of construction, wood construction going to something else. So you probably wouldn't go to six, you'd be going well above that. From a broad planning perspective, I would encourage that if the commission were to decide that something taller than five was appropriate on a place like Shelburne Road, to make sure that you have also done the same thing in city center so that you don't have city center being shorter buildings than elsewhere. Because ultimately and fundamentally, city center is the core area where you've tried to have the most of a downtown. So that, that's.
Would, would that be city center proper or would it be more Williston Road, North?
The, the form based code area, so the larger city center. Which currently allows for those five stories and then right here you allow for six stories. So you could again go up, I would just.
You don't like it?
No, no, I, I, I don't, I don't dislike it. I think that it, you might want to think about pairing it with some other things. Because once you get past four or five stories, then A, they're gonna have to switch construction methods. And then B, the big thing that's gonna happen land use wise is they're gonna have to make a really big decision of, do they wanna have a big parking lot, surface parking lot around this building? Or are they gonna build parking up, which gets really expensive? At four if stories, we see a lot of those around the city. You can park one floor underground and then a small parking lot in the back. If you get any higher than that, then they're gonna have to make a choice of either a big huge parking lot, which is sort of defeats some of the purpose of the height because then they can't build a wider building, they've just built a taller building. Or they're in for the next level of expense, which is last, prior to this most recent expansion in construction costs, parking spaces and structured parking were $30,000 a pop per parking space.
Before the increase.
Before the increase. So I would guess, you know, we're probably up to 40 per space, which is, you know.
I guess the big question is, I mean, you go to Montreal, as you well know, I mean, I don't think every, every building has parking available. Now, it's an urban center, but maybe one could have offer that, and if a developer sees there's an appetite for no parking because it's urban and there are gonna be people who are going to be using transit, they're gonna use Uber or whatever, I don't know. But maybe they could be creative. Now, not all buildings are that way, but at least maybe one could, so I don't know.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're hoping to see some in the city center soon because there are, there are no parking minimums in city center, so.
Well, you mentioned real quick, Per, what Ted was talking about, you talked about, I think was on the Shelburne Road corridor, five stories is the limit. But you said that has very rarely been.
Well, so, so a couple of years ago, you made a change. It used to be that 35 feet was the height and then you could ask the DRB permission for taller than that. You changed that maybe three years ago to say that in the urban design overlay district, they're automatically granted five stories. So they don't have to ask permission for it, they just, that's, that's the new limit. But they can't wave it above that number, the board.
No, my question with you, you said people haven't really taken advantage of that.
We've seen five, we've seen some fives. There's the Bartlett Brook Apartments, I believe is five, one on the old Olympiad property is a five. I believe that one of the ones in the O'Brien neighborhood is being proposed to be a five. So we're, we're seeing a little bit of it in the right circumstances. But not, we haven't seen anything past five because that, then you get into steel and concrete construction.
Yeah, I, I agree with, I mean, I, I, I agree with your comment, Paul, about city center being, I mean, that's our urban city center. And I agree with not exceeding heights outside of that area. And to that point, I also am very worried about the west side on Shelburne Road in particular, the noise that's gonna be bouncing off of buildings that are right on the road. And so I would love to broaden that conversation as well. But like, because it's not like our urban center, I don't see the need for the buildings to be directly on the road. So separate from TDR conversation, I agree that things within the form based code downtown, whatever, city center should look like our city center. And the others are just not, they're.
And then just, just one other note on the height thing. There may occasionally be an interest in more height. I think right now on places like Shelburne Road, the limitation that exists, the artificial limitation is on density. Because you could build a five story building today, but say in the C2 district, it's only seven dwelling units an acre. So in your five story building, you would never, you, you, you would hit your density cap before you got to your, your bulk of your building cap. So that's where this, a tool like this becomes potentially attractive. It's, you know, you guys, it's, it's up to you guys to decide whether you want to do more than one dwelling unit for a TDR. The best argument that I could make for why more than one would make sense on, on, on Shelburne Road is, is to reiterate what Michael was saying of. If you want to incentivize there to be more housing in that area, making it a little bit easier for them to do, to do more, will likely lead to more. So a developer saying, well, if I add one more story and it's 10 units a story, if I have to buy 10 TDRs for it, that's 100 to $150,000. If I only need to buy four TDRs, that's only $50,000, sure, that's worth my expenditure to build another story. It's, we, we know we won't hit the market exactly right, but it depends where you wanna, which side you wanna err on.
Well, the, the commission asked that, now it's a couple of years ago, that I should talk to developers and one of them was Larkin. And I asked him if he were able to build, put an extra story on the building at the corner of Fayette and Shelburne. By, by buying TDRs, would he, would he do it? And he said, yes. Yes, absolutely. If I could comply with all the other cities regulations. So. It gave me the idea that this is there is a latent market there. And, yeah, I don't know how many dwelling units they have on each floor of that building, but. You know, if if there was an incentive to get more than one per one per T D R. I'm sure that. Was just said, they probably go for it and we are trying to expand the market for T D Rs. Anyway, enough said.
Go to instead of three.
Yeah. I mean, Monica said, you know, let's let's see how it goes. We can try to and if it's works very well and with a lot of T D Rs are sold. Well, and we want to incentivize density. Somewhere in the city. Because that's the plan, then we can change it to three, or if it doesn't work, we go back to one.
So just as a quick point of explanation, I went with sort of a one, two, three structure because. Logically, to me, with what the commission has said about where they want to prioritize density. And where they want to prioritize prioritize density, it felt like there were logically three levels. There was kind of the one to one levels that are the some of the lower density residential areas, the S D Q areas. Then there was kind of a middle, a middle level where you could see or you could want to see some more some more density, but not necessarily. The dramatic focus of density. And then there was this sort of highest level. One, two, three is just sort of the integer progression of that. But that's that was the logic behind it. It it to set three levels instead of two, as opposed to. The arithmetic of of one to two versus one to three. But if the commission feels that there should really be kind of. Low density and high density, then there were then two levels.
Want to speak about the other table too, because I think that also influences that same thing.
Sure. Yes. So in the the other table is setting sort of the maximum that you could obtain through T D Rs. And it's the the distribution of zones is slightly different between the two tables for various reasons, mostly existing base density. But for the same reason, there's the highest level that we would say you could use as many T D Rs as you wanted to get. No maximum allowable density because there are significant other limitations in the L D Rs on. Setbacks and stormwater and. Lot coverage and all these other things that do limit the building size. Height is still one of them that could be changed, but that's that's one of them as well. So you could really incentivize the use of as many T D Rs as possible to. Reach the highest density that you could fit within the other parameters of the L D Rs in that highest density priority. Set of zones. And then there would be. A sort of middle level priority of density where you get fit your maximum allowed would be 50% more than your base. So you could get more than your base with T D Rs, but not unlimited and with the same the same issues of. Other constraints in the L D Rs.
And these districts tend to be more the transitional districts to. Single family, two family home neighborhoods. So you might not want to just say unlimited density in those areas to create a more of a transition. Rather than sort of a hard stop.
And there are some that are they're set their base density is a bit lower. Now they're, you know, seven or 12 instead of 12 or 15. The Allen Road and Swift Street. Zones are in that sort of middle level as that transitional, those transitional areas between sort of R one to four. Kind of up on the hill and and everything else down on Shelburne Road. And then the S D Q, as I mentioned before, would basically remain as it currently stands in the existing T D R section. So it is again prioritizing kind of three levels of. What you could get as a maximum through the purchase of as many T D Rs as you could purchase to still fit in the other parameters of the L D Rs. I've said a lot of words very quickly. Thoughts or questions?
I guess. Like, it seems nice to have the two different things like here is really like your maximum target, but then the other tables. Kind of how much you're paying for it.
Yeah.
And I don't know. I guess I agree with Monica. It feels like. Once we say they can get three units for one T D R, but that would be hard to back out on like three feels like. Maybe too much. But it feels like you wouldn't have to change this type of incentive in this table. To then make that change in the other table, you could still have the prioritization with the no maximum in these. See districts like the first line.
Yep.
But maybe back off on the three units per. T D R on the other one. I don't I don't know if that's maybe kind of getting a little closer to what your concern was, Monica.
Yeah, I mean, I have my I have a comment. So my comment is. In the areas where we have no maximum, we also have no parks. We have no life. So we're if we take away our maximum and the auto.
Well, just to quickly point on that, there is you still would have the civic space requirements and the site amenity requirements that were passed as part of the. The amendments will not pass. They're in front of the city council.
No, I know, but there are areas of the city where you can't easily get to anything. I mean, I don't know if anything's going to happen with the. Waterfront area there. I don't know if that's whatever, but but as of right now. Those areas that we've kind of talking about equity and, you know, that feels to me like. I I would feel I like the 50%. I would apply that to the auto as well. And then at some point, if there is a better park and. Safe on there's nothing on show on the west side of Shelburne Road. That's easy for people to, you know, they'd have to cross a four lane road. To get to a park. So I I would be hesitant to just go with like no maximum because that's really to me sending a message of we want. You know, go for it here. And then where do the what's the quality of life? What do the how do the people safely live there? So. That doesn't seem equitable to me. I like the 50% very much for both of those. And, you know, I mean, my my background in marketing price setting prices is a is a thing. And I I would just encourage you to stick with the one to one. I think you I think you'll be surprised at. You know, I mean, if they're spending 100 100 or 1.3 million on Act 250. And that's I think they'll. They'll bite some of my two cents.
A quick question for Kelsey. I mean, if if. We do what Monica is talking about and it just go one to one. In the first line on the first chart where there's no maximum, would that it seems to me like that would serve kind of as an incentive to get more T D Rs in that area?
It would be a much lighter level incentive. It would still cost. So. The effect would be that it would cost the same to build to buy the T D R to build an extra unit in. C one R 15 as in R seven or in the S D Q. The there's. There's some incentive that if you have no maximum, you can put more units into a single building and maybe you need fewer. There's fewer systems costs or or site. Preparation cost like there's some of that building, construction financing stuff that yes, there is a. Each additional unit may cost less in a building with 30 as opposed to a building with eight. So yes, there is some there is some incentivization there.
My point is, I I don't feel like we should. I'm OK if we go one to one, but I don't feel that we should get rid of this if we're going to go one to one. We should leave some sort of incentive. Out there.
I mean, I what I'd say to that is. That that sounds like it means someone's going to come in and be like, gee, should I buy an R seven lot? Where I get 50% or should I go and buy a C one auto lot to develop where I get? That's not probably going to happen. It's going to be whoever owns the auto lot is going to be like, what's the best thing I can do here? I don't think they're going to be comparing it to what kind of deal they can get elsewhere because that's not the property that they have. So I'm looking, I'm trying to look at, you know, what's the best thing for that that property? And I I would be all for the no maximum if I knew that on the west side of that crazy busy road, there are safe. You know, if we knew, for example, that that beautiful, what is it called? The Feral waterfront? If there was going to be a beautiful city park there. Hey, go for it, right? Because I would live there so I could walk over to that park. But we don't have that. And so it's to me, it's it's just it it doesn't feel equitable. That's a lot of housing without. Easy access to. So if there is, if there is something that we could know, or maybe the city can finally say, let's make something happen at that. Beautiful waterfront thing to make something like this more because that would that would be all the incentive, I think. Developer might be interested in is a safe walk to that part. But my.
Well, where are we?
Well, I think we it sounds like we have some mixed. Yeah, I mean, it's getting quite late. It sounds like we still have some kind of mixed feelings on the incentives.
What homework could we do to help you as you chew on this? Or do you just need a little time to chew on?
Need to chew on it a lot more.
Well, I mean, on this on this question that you've been wrestling with tonight, is there anything we could be doing to help you? Or is this really just you just need to? Some time as a group to to on it, which is perfectly.
Yeah, I guess.
Complex tool.
You you mean on.
Can I offer a compromise? How what if people think if if the are if it's? The C one is a up to 50% and the next one is a 25%? Does that seem too little?
In some of those districts, 25% would be, you know, two. Two units per acre. You know, R seven would effectively go to R nine. Which is not a not a big incentive to be spending money for those additional units. That's just my my gut gut reaction. 50% seemed like it would make it worthwhile to go through the process. There are legal steps about executing conservation. There's things that you have to do. To do this. So it's not just the cost of the T D R itself. There are some additional process costs. I'm not a developer, but my gut is that. Too much less than 50% above base may not incentivize at all.
And at the same time, you know, on the flip side of that same thing, in some of these districts in that second row, you may say. Boy, I don't know that I want to see density go up that much higher. Because don't forget this, what you know, we'll have to tie this into the inclusionary requirements. Inclusionary already allows for a 50%. Bonus. So just keep in mind that these are transitional districts. I think that's why we'd sort of separated them out a little bit of. Suggesting that and and there's there's no right or wrong here. You you could establish a cap. I I will say that in the city center form base code, it's it's becoming very interesting to see what's happening in the market when there is no cap on density. Seeing what what people are starting to do creatively when no longer is that a number at all. It's 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 we're only starting to see what that might represent, but it's interesting.
I see in the second line there, you've got Swift S W, right?
Yep.
But Allen Road is.
AR.
AR. Yeah.
OK.
Yeah, and that was actually the first question in my memo that we sort of. We're jumping around a little bit, but the first question was, do you even want? Our seven, our seven and C and our 12 to be receiving areas at all?
I would say yes.
Yeah, I think we got past that.
OK. OK, I just wanted to clarify when it.
In the transit overlay.
In the transit overlay district where. Because in my mind, if you're only allowing, you know, 20% 25% over base, then maybe it's not.
Right. Well, I don't know if there's specific homework. I think we just need to talk about it.
I'm sure we're all going to come back with some.
Yeah, I think now we have some thought on. Yeah, food for thought.
As of as of now, what I'm hearing is we'll leave the draft on the staff end. We'll leave the draft as is, and it will just be put on the next agenda for further conversation.
A shortly future agenda, maybe not the next.
Shortly.
Shortly.
And that will include more research on the owner. You guys will let us know how we can better understand owner occupied. Issues. May maybe we've dropped them. I don't know.
I think what we decided is that that's like a bigger thing. We need to schedule into the. Like, I don't think we can add that in here.
I think that's.
In the short term.
Expertise that you thought we needed to find.
We do. Right. So but I didn't know that we were definitively removing the conversation from T D Rs.
I think we're removing it from them adding something for our next. Week or the week after we need to.
As a separate.
I think so. Wasn't that what it was that we needed? It was like a bigger issue with a few other.
But but to potentially ultimately be part of this or not.
Potentially ultimately, but maybe not in the next month.
Not in the first round. OK, I mean.
I I think it would hold us up and complicate.
I I think we need to simplify and get the market going. Well, right, but there's a question of possible. And then there's a question of if it's possible, do you want to explore it, knowing that it adds complexity regardless? And I think. You know, do you are you ready to give some guidance on that? Or do you want a legal answer first? I guess that's where I'm hearing a little bit of wrestling.
I think adding complexity also adds time, and I think we should try and get this done and then.
The invisible parking lot. I disagree, but I I go with the majority. If we want to do a motion, I'm fine with that. I'll make a motion that we. Investigate the feasibility and legality of. Incorporating some measure of owner occupied. Connection requirement within the T D R. Review.
One second.
OK, any discussion? Questions? OK, I'm in favor of adding it into the T D R review.
Down in flames, Monica.
All right. Well, yeah, but I'm not all in flames of adding it to our work plan. I just feel like I think it's an issue that's really important, but. Maybe not.
Well, Monica's Monica's motion was to investigate it, not to add it.
Oh, I thought it was.
I I asked that we investigate whether it can fit here as a require as a potential requirement. I I just want to know. And it's.
I guess my concern is I don't want it to hold up. Getting the program out. That that's my concern.
I we haven't had a conversation about when this is expected to be released. Do we have a? Do we have a under? Do we have a goal of when we want to have a public hearing on this or anything? What are?
As a goal, your. You set it as one of your 20 physically your 2022 things that, you know, goals are meant to be adjusted, but setting a goal, yes, it was this. Part of this work plan to do the first T D R. Amendment.
OK. And about at least a month ago, if not more, we the concept did come up that this could be a place. So that's why I brought it up, that the T D Rs could be a place where we could. That we could use to incentivize owner occupied, which is why I brought it up. So we did discuss that before and. We did. Yes, we did. So. But I'm fine. It went down to. To the whatever. So there it is.
Now make a motion on the minutes.
Yes, can we skip the work plan process for? Do we need to talk about that?
No, the what I included in the memo is fairly self explanatory. For for this made a meeting, we can we can skip any further discussion of it.
But just start thinking about the things complan's going to be your comprehensive plan is going to be the big project next year. But start thinking, no, it'll be fun, Ted, but I promise I promise it'll be fun. It'll be exhilarating and fun. We'll have cookies. It'll be great. But start thinking about what other things you would like to advocate the priorities, not just of the commission, but as the city. So just start noodling on that. Council's going to be going through their exercise of policy priorities in early June. After the planning commission and various city committees and city staff leadership of the all given their suggestions. So. This is all funneling towards a set of big priorities for the city.
I know it's gonna be fun, Ted. It's gonna be so much fun.
I sent a correction on the March 8 minutes. So I don't know if you guys saw that. I sent it late.
Yeah, I I only got your email when we got into the room.
Yeah, that's OK. So I would just ask that we hold off on the March 8. Do you or do you want to know what my correction? I mean. Do you do I just give it to you or does?
I have it in.
So then we can. So then we can include that in the motion.
Are you screen sharing it, Kelsey?
I can.
Or I'm, I'm ready to if you don't have it up.
I do. Give me a second. Not very fast.
It can wait. I just didn't want to. We don't, we.
Here we go.
About teeth.
So I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes with this change. We accept the March eighth meeting minutes.
Any other discussion? Okay, on favor?
Another seven minutes also.
Do we approve twenty second?
You did the eighth just now. You have not done twenty second.
Right. So I make a motion that we accept the March twenty second.
Okay, any discussion on favor? Any other business? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.